All right, folks, this is six thirty, this thing is safe, please.
I'll make a motion for approval, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second it. Well, good evening. I'm here to represent the Mills River Life and Richment Center, and I'm doing a follow-up. On August the twenty-sixth, we did a request for ten thousand dollars to help support the senior adult outreach program here in Mills River from the COVID funds that was awarded to the town of Mills River. And I'm just kind of here to do a follow-up. That was in August, and I haven't heard anything yet, maybe. So I just kind of wanted to touch base and see where we were, and I only see one face that was here that night. So I have copies if y'all would like to have a copy of the request.
That's a good summary. We have a couple of policies and things we need to adopt before we can actually issue any funding. So that's what the matter practically, and we're working on that this.
Okay, okay. Well, just want y'all to know that we are still interested and in need and able to use whatever you can send our way. Well, thank you. Would you spell that for my records, please?
K E L S C H. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Frank Kelch. I'm an architect in Hendersonville, and I'm here with my colleagues Drew Abbott and Chris Cormier from Carolina Specialties Construction. We're currently working with the Smithsons, the Smithson family who own Skyline Plastics on Jeffers Road. We're doing an addition to that project.
Is, would this, does this possibly be anything to do with special use permit at all before I let him go any further? No.
It has, it's a variance.
It's for a variance.
Correct.
Just to the board of adjustments.
Should we hear this though tonight? Don't think so. It would probably be in all's best interest if we do not hear this tonight.
Okay.
I'm just being honest.
Sure, fair enough. Thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
Hey, that's all I got. Anybody else that's in here for public comment that doesn't have to do with the appointment after what? Hearing nothing, we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda, please.
I'll make motion for consent agenda.
Thank you, Randy. A second. Thank you, James. All in favor? Okay, on to the regular agenda. And I think we have Brittany here from the partnership to give us a little info.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me out tonight. I'm Brittany Brady with the Partnership for Economic Development. We just want to provide you an update on the program of work from our organization as well as our upcoming funding request for the town of Mills River. I believe most of you are aware of the mission of the partnership. Ultimately, we work to create and retain quality jobs in Henderson County as well as the town of Mills River. And we look to find new businesses that are compatible with the assets of our community and promote Henderson County's business image. Most importantly, we assist those existing industries in the community and help enhance the overall quality of life. You can see the pillars of our organization are outlined there. Again, existing industry, marketing and business development, product development and advocacy. Further, a little bit deeper, how do we handle those pillars of our work? Existing industry again is first and foremost our top priority to make sure our friends and neighbors are taken care of. We do that through retention calls, retention calls where we go and we have an in-depth meeting with these companies to make sure that they're healthy and they're doing okay, and there's no hurdles that we can't help them overcome. We cannot avoid a global pandemic here in Henderson County as hard as we tried, but otherwise we help them with the day-to-day operations. And we also do neighborhood and sector meetings, get those like-minded organizations together, and to make sure that they are sharing information and sharing knowledge to make, again, our community successful. Workforce is not a pillar of our organization, but instead a response to an existing industry need. And we have a program called Made in Henderson County that expands to the apprenticeship program in which we partner with Blue Ridge Community College. We've done some interesting things recently trying to promote manufacturing careers through a campaign called Career Crossroads. And we have a relocation guide, and we'll do some more marketing on the impact of manufacturing and those manufacturing careers. Marketing and business development is when we go outside the walls of Henderson County to recruit companies back in the area. Again, we strive to find companies that are a good fit for our county. And the product development is how we secure sites and buildings in our community. And we do that through a group called the Economic Investment Fund of Henderson County. And we are focused to make sure that we know what's going to come up in the future, where we can place site or products, projects on sites and buildings. And the best way to do that is to control those sites, to own those sites, and to make sure that we have a say in what's coming into the community. In two thousand and twenty, we did go through a target market analysis. It's the first time that we updated our strategic plan in over twenty years. For us, fortunately, most of those things still stood out, but we wanted to make sure we were still on the right path. We were fortunate that during our strategic plan that the consultant was able to pivot and give us advice on how to weather COVID and how to move forward in the next couple of years past the pandemic. You can see the SWOT analysis there before you, identifying some of the targets that we're focused on, the threats of, you know, land, and how can we continue to secure that land? Looking at those opportunities and looking at the strengths of our organization. The target markets are where we focus our marketing and business development efforts, again, going outside of the walls of the county. Focused on companies in healthcare similar to Royal Medic here in Mills River, food and beverage similar to Sierra Nevada, machinery, materials. That's the bulk of the manufacturing we have here. Companies like Skyline Plastics, for example, that do just a little bit of everything. Professional and technical services, UPM Raffletack would be a great example. They're a manufacturer, but they have that professional arm. Outdoor recreational goods, we see that throughout the community, and then transportation components. And we can't forget we're just north of Greenville, South Carolina, and just south of Asheville, which provides us opportunities to serve both BMW and the future Pratt Whitney site there. So what about Mills River focusing on the impact of industrial development in our community? And you'll see some numbers there. In the town of Mills River, most recently, in the past decade, we've recognized over five hundred and three million dollars coming into this community. And that equates to close to fourteen hundred new jobs in the tax receipts you can see there before you. In Henderson County, during that same time, we're close to a billion dollars and three thousand new jobs, and the annual tax receipts there exceed five million dollars. Now, those are in Henderson County. That's just a snapshot of our program of work since two thousand and six. And since they are inception in Mills River, we've seen over five hundred and seventy-four million dollars coming into the community. The town has twenty-three industries, and as a reminder, there's a hundred and thirty industries total in the county. So you can see that impact is pretty substantial in the town of Mills River with the work that we do. Job creation multipliers are important to us because manufacturing takes up about fifteen percent of our workforce, but it impacts our entire community. And you can see that the higher, more robust manufacturers in our community contribute more. So a job in plastics manufacturing, for example, will have a one point six three multiplier effect. That means that that might help bring contractor positions and landscapes and architects and you name it. Where a job in automotive manufacturing that might be a little bit more robust is adding more jobs, maybe more logistics, for example. We also realize the economic development is not in a silo, so an impact in Mills River impacts the entire community. And an impact in southern Henderson County impacts the entire community. And for an example, if you have an employee who is going to work at the Jable facility, it's in southern Henderson County, but resides in Mills River, they're paying their property tax bills in Mills River. They're driving through the community, and so we can see how those money, that money moves throughout the community and economic development as a whole in the county impacts all of our citizens. So the Economic Investment Fund, as I alluded to, is a separate arm of the partnership. It focuses primarily on site and building development as well as workforce development. And in layman's terms, this is a pocketbook. We need to have a fund that we can pull from because our organization is not your traditional nonprofit. We're a C-six organization, EIF is a C-three organization. And so having that flexibility through funding allows us to go and be robust to secure product and focus on those workforce needs. Again, the workforce is not a pillar of our organization, but is a response to our economy today. And so Economic Investment Fund is the vehicle to get there. We're currently public-private. Most of our municipalities and public partners do fund the Economic Investment Fund to make sure that we can continue to have opportunity here in Henderson County. So we believe in securing our future through industrial site development. And in the town of Mills River, there are only four sites that are zoned industrial. And you can see the success that we've had with Mills River, but unfortunately, that means that there's less opportunities for future growth. And there's certainly competition for land. Our organization, we focus primarily on advanced manufacturing. Almost any use can go into an industrial site. We've looked at those multipliers. We see that overall impact, and so we want to make sure that we're securing industrial sites for industrial use. We don't want to lose an industrial zone site to a non-industrial use. And we continually update our sites and buildings, and so we have those ongoing relationships with willing landowners where we know the price per acre, we know the due diligence that is there. But EIF allows us to go a little bit deeper, again, to work with our public partners to secure those sites, to make sure they're protected. The only way that we can say what's going to happen on a site is if we own the site and we control the site. The Garrison site picture is what you see there. It looks very different today, but we have covenants on that park. It is a park that we own in partnership with the county and the city of Hendersonville, and so we can drive the traffic to that site a little differently than a private landowner. So looking at the Mills River industrial tax base, again, seventeen percent of industry is in the town of Mills River. Sixty-one percent of investment is in the town of Mills River. So you've got large investment like D F Lenamar in Sierra Nevada, right here in this community. And fifty-five percent of the new job creation is in the town of Mills River. However, Mills River only funds us at seventy-five percent of our peers, of your peers. And so you can see our current contributions, and you will have a formal request for us in the coming weeks. We would like to ask that you join your peers. You can see the city of Hendersonville and the town of Fletcher support our organization at twenty thousand, and then Mills River supports us at fifteen thousand. And we would love to see that ask increase, just like most organizations, we have had, you know, significant expenses through the pandemic increases there. And we've also updated our strategic plan to be more robust, and we are adding a full-time fourth person in the office, something that we've never had before. And so we are asking that Mills River come alongside us so we can continue. And then Mills River has not contributed to the Economic Investment Fund, and we would ask that you consider that contribution. Again, it allows us to secure those industrial sites and preserve them and work with you and partner with you to have a say in what's coming in the community in regards to industrial development. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have for me. I also have the chair of my board and the chair-elect of my board here tonight as well. Should you have any questions for them?
Are you pretty familiar with our organization? They do a great job. We're running out of spots, so pretty quick.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one moment. So Mrs. Brady came this evening. Last month, you saw a presentation from Sheriff's Office, and this is a little bit different approach than what we've done in the past with visioning. So we're having the agencies come to regular meetings. That way, when visioning happens on the fourteenth, we dedicate the day to work the town business rather than this update. So just for the benefit of the public, I want to just make that announcement.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to B, council candidate interviews. If one of the staff members would just call each one of them up, I think what we've decided to do, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to give each candidate three minutes to speak. Well, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you think you'd be a good fit for the vacant seat over here to my left. And we had you answer the three questions. We've all read the three questions. We're just trying to keep it as fair as we can, since we got as many as we've got. So if possible, we'll just get you up one at a time, and you hear what you got to say.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into the introductions, I have just a quick PowerPoint, if I may, please, really for the benefit of the public as a reminder of how we got, how we got to where we are. So Mr. Snyder resigned back in January. There were a number of outreach opportunities that we completed to make the public aware that this position was available. And so we sent applications out earlier this month, or posting there too. We asked that applications become, be submitted by last Friday. We got ten applications. We have since had one person withdraw, so you got to nine. Earlier this week, we sent out three questions to all the candidates, asked them to provide responses by today at noon, and all of them did. And those were provided to you earlier today. The process for filling this seat is really up to the council. One of the general statutes requires that a vacancy be filled by the elected body. One of the vacancies is on the elected body. So what we've done so far is to really make this process as transparent and as fair as possible. There's no specific process spelled out in the statutes. Again, for the benefit of the public, council's made up of five seats. There are three districts with the representative of each district. There's two at-large members, and one of the at-large seats is vacant currently. And that is the term that someone will hopefully fill soon to serve the remainder of, until November of twenty-three, if they choose to run for reelection, they could or not. Yeah, a list of candidates is here. I think all these folks are here tonight. That's all I have as far as, oh, again, excuse me, the, usually the questions that were sent out really early this week. So that's all I have for background. I just wanted to get that out there for the public's information, and we will start with Mr. Kelly.
Good evening. The town's population explosion has happened, and Mills River needs to decide what sort of persona it should take as it moves forward. It is a balancing act of creating jobs and opportunities and preserving our natural resources. I do not want to see this town become another flyover area or unbound urbanization. I want this town to have an identity and contain opportunities for all. As a member of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Advisory Board, I believe we need to protect this area and what it has to offer. I want to help lead this town into the future. While I'm a big proponent of not spending capital that is not accessible, the increased population of this area has seen and will continue to see means the time is ripe to build the infrastructure before we need it. I think it is important to quickly update and develop amenities before they are needed. Let us get ahead of the curve and build now rather than constructing incrementally and always wishing for what is needed. I'm involved with two local, small businesses, and I know the value of investments. Smart, careful investments in parks raises the quality of living and attracts more interest by businesses and companies that will contribute to this community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. President, the floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Eugene Edwards. I've lived here about fifteen years. My interest is simply is to get involved to help manage the growth that Mills River is going to have. I have like three sons and five grand grandsons. No girls, don't understand why, but it's all boys in the family. So kid at West, I was, I've been retired now for about three years from Eaton Corporation. Spent forty years in the contractor business. And I've traveled, I think I've been to every state and almost every city in the country, so I've seen a bunch of stuff in my forty years in electrical business. As I said, when I gave the questions, my concerns for Mills River is that, believe it or not, with the advent of industries that actually love coming here, like United Technologies Pratt Whitney. If you don't manage that growth in Mills River and you ignore that growth in Mills River, then you're going to be reacting to whatever, whatever happens around you. So, so to me, managed growth is the secret. This is, I've been to cities that didn't manage growth. I've been to cities that managed growth. Lived in Nashville, Tennessee before I moved here, lived in Brentwood, and I saw that growth, both good and bad. Go from a farming community to now just a ridiculously busting cheap house, costs about a million bucks type, type community in Brentwood. So my idea to, on council, is just make sure that I can help guide and direct and have some kind of influence on what is the best course from Mills River as we've decided that we're not moving. So that's about it. And any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Brady? You're up, sir.
My name's Jerry Friday. I was born and raised here in Mills River, lived here fifty years, got three businesses here. Went to Mills River Elementary, rugby, West High. I'm concerned with the growth as well. I'm a Christian, and I think I get a pretty good input from the public on a daily basis of the people in the town of Mills River. So I feel like I could help with this board, and, and like I say, I think the growth is the biggest thing. We need to kind of guide with this deal. But I'm a local person, and I believe I can do a good job and fit in good with the board. Any questions?
We thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kimball? You're up, sir.
Good evening. Most of y'all know who I am, for everybody's sake, we'll go ahead. So my name is Brian Kimball. I was born and raised in Mills River. With the exception of the time that I went to college, I've lived here my entire life. Mills River is home for me, as it is for a lot of people, but it means a little different when you're born and raised here to say that it's your home. My activity with the town started in two thousand and eleven when I was appointed to the planning board. I was on the planning board for nine years. In two thousand and twenty, I was appointed to council, filled out the remainder of an abdicated term until the twenty-one election. Once Councilman Snyder resigned, you know, I had debated about applying, and, you know, it was something that I internally battled with out of respect for the election, for James. I didn't want to cause any issues, and that's still where I stand today. What I bring to the table is that I offer experience. We know that Mills River is in a real crunch right now. The next two years, we have some real big issues coming for council. What we need is experience in council and familiarity with those decisions. That's what I can bring to the table. I want to help the community, and I want to be able to help us move forward as a town. That's where I come. That's what I offer. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Meadows, you're up, sir.
You don't have to pick me up. No, I'm fine, Danny. It's only to be. Welcome to all of y'all today and all of you. I think it's so great to see the ten candidates put their name down. That shows me they were a lot of input and thoughts about Mills River. We do have a very beautiful area. Of course, I've been here for eighty-nine and a half years, and the good Lord's willing, he let me live here. I want to help. I did have the opportunity to work on the board for a while. Had some medical issues that I had to resolve, and I left it, and, but everything's clear, and I'm in good shape. But well, I'm not in good shape, can't walk, but I've got a good mind on me, got a lot of energy. I know every inch of this town. I guess I've fished and hunted or whatever, and seen it grow for a totally rural farming community to an economic development center. And it's done that real fast in the last twenty years. And I am for controlled growth. I've always, my career was in the industrial world, managing the industry and stuff, and it's a good aspect. And the more of the industrial that we can bring in here, I think helps our young people with their pay. Everything right now is based on, a lot is based on housing, just volumes of people. Some people says they don't like to call it a bed community, but you can say what you want to, but we are a bed community. Most of the people that live here doesn't work here. But we can, we're slowly putting that to bed and going forward. I'm more than willing to serve again on the board and try to be a compatible friend, but with a lot of experience, my experience in industrial world and all over the US and worldwide, have a lot of deep things in my head. I think I could offer help to these good-looking group up here. See, that's bribery right there. But that's what you got to do sometimes. But we do, I do appreciate all what y'all are doing as a new group, and it's wonderful. If I can help, I'm here, I'm willing, I'm able, I've got the time. Appreciate all of what y'all are doing. I appreciate all these candidates coming out tonight. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Meadows. Ms. McGuire? You're up, ma'am.
Good evening. Well, we moved to Mills River because of the rural community that it provided for us. We were looking for that, and we just love it here. I've been a public servant for most of my career in a variety of different ways, so I do bring to the council experience, serving as an elected official. And so I do know Robert's Rules of Order and the Open Meetings Act. I'm also very passionate about being a servant leader in my community. And so while I agree with everyone who has presented so far, there needs to be a managed growth here in Mills River. I am currently involved in nonprofit work. That is my profession, and I lead a literacy council. And one of the things that we're very focused on is workforce development, and that's a very important focus, is workforce development and housing issues in our, in the whole of Henderson County, frankly. And Mills River has an opportunity to address those needs based on the land that we have and also the land usage that we're putting together. Reading through your comprehensive plan, it's very, it's very aggressive, but very encouraging to see that the town is dedicated to providing a balance of land usage along with some of the beauty of the community as well. And so I believe that I could bring forward my expertise and my passion for the community and help the council for the future. I'm very much passionate about the future for our young people and the families that want to come and move here and work here. I just heard from the economic development woman who talked about the jobs that have been provided and the industry that's being provided here, and that's very exciting to see. I do offer experience as the CEO of a Chamber of Commerce, and so I'm very, I have the acumen for business development as well as growing communities in a slow way, coming from one community that was a farm community that grew into a little bit more of a metropolis area, but with a slow and dedicated pace. And so that is why I put my application in. I'm passionate. We are here to stay. This is my community now, and I would love to be a part of seeing the future of Mills River grow and flourish for our families. Thank you.
Ms. Petersen, Spoonholz?
Hello, I am Teresa Spoonholz. I am a transplant to the community, but we have been here in western North Carolina for about eleven years. for about eleven years. Um, we did buy a house here in Mills River Village about seven years ago. And so I'm, I love this community. We bought a house here because of the schools, because of the community, because of the small town feel. And so, and because it was close to our, where our works. Of course, we work outside of Mills River. I, I'm a store manager for Home Depot. I run the largest volume Home Depot in Western North Carolina and upstate of South Carolina. Um, I employ a hundred and eighty-five associates and I work belly to belly, day, day in and day out with people in the trades and the building industry. Um, and, and I see their challenges, I see, I see their busyness, I, I, I feel their busyness. And I really understand what it is to manage growth and, and how to help them on their side. I truly believe as a servant to the community and a servant to, to my family, that being involved in local, um, government is important. I've always wanted to be involved in local government. Um, and, and I'm in a position where I understand the growth that we're facing as, as a state, as a community. The United States is, um, short five million homes currently due to the lack of building in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and two thousand and ten. It's going to take ten years to catch up. And so it's important to understand that people, there, there is a need for housing. There is a need for people who live in apartments to have housing and buildings coming. And so how do we as a community manage that in a way where our residents feel like this is that's, that small town that they want, they grew up in and that they moved to and that their kids go to school in. I have kids, um, both in Mills River Elementary and at West Henderson High. I have a senior that's going to go to, um, Western University next year. So it's important for me and their growth to know that if they're going to grow up in a community where, um, it feels small. I grew up in a small community in Ohio. My husband's from a farming community in Michigan. Um, and so it's, it's important to have that, that individual touch that where you, everybody here, I, I see a lot of people that know each other, um, run into the grocery store, you know, your neighbors, um, you don't get that in Asheville or Greenville or, or large cities. So a, as we manage our growth, um, and look at what that looks like over the next two, five, ten years, um, we're going to have growth. It's inevitable, we have to, otherwise we're going to be bursting at the seams. But, um, how do we do that and how do we keep that small town feel? So that's why I want to be part of the council, um, and participate in local government. Any questions?
Mr. Young.
Good evening, Mayor Gantz, members of the council. My name is Jeff Young. And I've submitted to you an application for the vacant seat on your council. Uh, one thing I did notice on the application that I didn't really take a deep dive on to the why, so I was going to try to take my time this evening to go a little deeper into the why I'm before you tonight, uh, submitting my name for your consideration for this council seat. Uh, like everyone here, uh, care and love this community. I raised a family here and, uh, and this opportunity to serve on council in the appointed position, uh, is just a continuation of a long record of service to this community. I started back in two thousand and three when I was on your planning board, uh, for eight years as a member, vice chair and chairman, uh, went on to Parks Rec Committee, uh, spent four years on there, again, trying to, uh, foster and promote and advocate and see the many benefits that have come to fruition. It was recently, I was on the finance committee till it was dissolved last fall. Uh, and then this council's appointed me to your ag advisory committee. So, uh, again, this is just an extension of that service and it's not restricted, uh, to just Mills River. I've lived most of my life in Henderson County and so I do serve, uh, as a volunteer in a county as well. And I did file my application that, uh, County Commissioners appointed me in twenty twenty onto the Board of Health. There's a seat reserved for a professional engineer and so I currently serve on the county's Board of Health as well. So I just wanted to bring that, uh, to your attention, just as a, as demonstration of my service. What comes to play now is maybe why now, uh, put my name in for consideration? Well, uh, alluded to on my application that my career has been an engineer, both in private and public sector, but, uh, I recently retired, recent as of October twenty twenty-one, uh, from public service after twenty-nine years of service. Uh, and up to that point, I'd always jokingly told, uh, friends and associates, I was an engineer that did a little bit of farming, starting in October. I'm now a farmer that does just a little bit of engineering. And I work on the family farm, uh, right here in Mills River. So I live and work, uh, for the first time. As my position with the Department of Agriculture with the state, I, uh, I ended my career, uh, as a chief of technical services. So I supervised a couple dozen people across the state, traveled extensively, was in Raleigh every week, but all that's come to an end now. And so, uh, this has been, uh, a means to an end and being that I want to turn Mills River, work on the family farm and devote. So this opportunity's come at a, a good time for me personally, because now I can vote the time, the resources, the attention that I think it deserves. So I don't, or I consider this vacancy, uh, not the same as, as, as you, ladies and gentlemen, because you have a mandate. Voters made a decision at the ballot box to put you in for the reasons, uh, this one is quite different. I see it more as a steward, you're steward of this seat for eighteen months until the voters again, tell us who and what they want in that position. So I offer my services to you tonight with a background, uh, in service to this town, in different capacities. So I have a full understanding of behind the, uh, behind this, um, service and, uh, offered to you to, uh, give that same dedication, uh, even though the expanded, the responsibilities have increased exponentially, uh, I now have the resource of time to devote to them. So thank you for your time today.
Dr. Zia.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Uh, just want to start with thank you for all the work that you do for us as resident of Mills River. I know everyone's time is valuable, um, and you know, everyone has busy lifestyle, family. So I want to thank you for taking the time. I also want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. Currently I serve as the head of Department of Research and Ecology at UNC Healthcare Party. Uh, in that capacity of heck, she had the opportunity to treat several patients, uh, for Henderson County at large and several residents of Mills River. In all my conversations and interactions with patients, the one defined trait is how much they love living here, value it and want to preserve it. On a personal level, I moved here with my wife and my three young daughters and could not think of a better place to live and it's very important to me to preserve Mills River. So the last, uh, two, three years have been very challenging, healthcare in general, as it has been for everyone. Had a lot of changes, a lot of, um, decisions I had to make, resource allocations, budgets, really changing landscape. And I really think that is very similar to what Mills River is kind of at right now, the crossroads. Um, all the candidates have talked about growth and growth is coming. And I really do think it's important to manage it. I think everyone's kind of in agreement with that. And it's important to preserve the character of the city that everyone loves and why they moved here or they're born here. Local business, agriculture, uh, you know, local industry, those are important. So managing growth, uh, is obviously of paramount importance, preserving the character of the city. And I feel that my experience in having to do that, uh, although in a different capacity, in a different industry, but having to think rapidly and evolve, um, and try to think forward, um, in the healthcare setting, you have, are looking out for the health of the county at large, Mills River, and here we're looking out for the well-being of our fam-friendly friends, family and the people at large. And so you want to make the best committee here and now and for future generations. And I just want to, uh, help out the best I can. And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the applications we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to say that I'm very impressed to have none of you step up here to the plate tonight and tell us why you'd be a good fit for Mills River. And I don't see why any one of you couldn't fill that seat over there after hearing from you, reading your questions, listen to you talk, you know, in front of the podium, in front of everybody. That's, just anybody can't get up and do that. But in saying that, uh, does, does everybody feel like now that we've heard from these candidates, we have ample time to make a decision tonight? Or y'all want to have us sleep on it and let Sue advertise and give us a few days? We'd have to advertise in a special call meeting if we do it that way. It's totally up to, it's totally up to the board. It's a big decision. I'm sure everybody knows it's a big decision for four of us to have to make this. It would be nice to have a, had a small election and let the people of Mills River take, make this choice. I took me a bunch of notes under that as I spoke. Where y'all at with it?
Uh, I'm okay if you want to sleep on it or, or look over your notes, look over the questions, look over, yeah.
I just feel like, I just feel like if we do that, we'll, we'll have looked over everybody's stuff over really good. We can leave friendships and stuff aside and make a, we need to make the best decision for the town of Mills River. You know, everybody's mentioned it's a small step till we get to the next election, but there's still going to be critical decisions made in that period that we need to make sure we got the best person up that we can for that position.
So we were talking about a meeting when?
Um, so we probably need to advertise this for at least seventy-two hours. So I can work anything in pretty much next week. If, if anybody's got a meeting or a obligation, we can, we can do it morning, evening, whenever. It'd probably be nice if we could do it during regular hours, so we don't tie staff over another evening. That's just my say. So we get a motion to have a meeting. Y'all okay with next, anybody got anything next Thursday morning? You work? You'd rather do it at the evening? What time, what time you get up for it? I'm just, two thirty, so we could do next Thursday. What time could you make it here? Three, three thirty, three thirty? So three thirty next Thursday, work? Randy, you okay with that? Say, you, say just a second. Somebody might get the motion for us.
I'll make it in a motion that we think about this until next Thursday at three thirty.
We'll have, we'll have a special call meeting for three thirty next Thursday to make this appointment. And I get a second on that? Thank you, Randy. All in favor? Okay, so there's where we're going to be next Thursday, three thirty. And if it's okay, I'm going to put this out there. If anybody, this is how I'd like to see it though. It's still going to be wide open. I want to, if it's all right with the four of us and staff, I would like to take a, a piece of paper, we sign our name to it and we write our, our candidate that we want to fill the seat down. We pass them over, Sue will tally the votes, read our name, you know, and who are our candidates. That way we don't feel pressured by anybody that makes a prior vote. You'll be voting just on your heart and your feelings for that seat and not what somebody else has voted ahead of you, because somebody would have to go first and open vote, okay?
You, you may have a commitment.
Me.
According to your wife.
Really?
You can't hide. Ask her what time.
You probably need to step up to the mic. Yeah.
That's fine. Um, I just have a question about the way y'all are going to vote.
Okay.
Four blind votes. What if there are four separate names?
It could be a tie, then we're just going to have to.
So what happens?
I think.
I mean, what, since it's up to you guys, I just kind of played out my head.
That way, it could be two to two, it could be, anything could happen, but I just think that if we do it that way to start with, nobody feels pressured on whether, if we start in the middle and go this way, I don't want somebody following somebody else's lead, I want them to vote on their heart. And once, if we get in a situation like that, we're going to have to deliberate it and open.
Right.
And, and try to come to this decision Thursday.
Yeah. I mean, because i- is it just simply unanimous? Is it?
No. It would be a majority vote, I would think, yes.
They have to have a majority in order to appoint.
Yes, yes. It's okay, we're, we're, yeah, we're leaving it for three thirty. We'll, I'll move whatever it is. It may be, I may have, I may be supposed to be taking her somewhere because she can't drive, you know, after having the stroke. So, but we'll, I'll get somebody to take her if it's a situation like that. Okay? All right. Is that it for that? Need anything else from us or we're good?
That's it, we'll do.
All right.
I just want a little clarification. Is that to make the appointment or consider the appointment?
Uh, well, we're going to have to say consider because, uh, we will have to come up with a unanimous, uh, vote. But I would like, I will say as the mayor, I would like to see that seat build if possible Thursday. I don't want to drag it out no longer. I want to get them in there for this vision and process and any other decisions we need to be made.
Sandra, you're right with amending your motion instead of saying make, saying consider. I, I'm leaving it that way in case you're not able to come to a consensus that day and want further information.
Okay.
Yes, that'll be fine. Thank you.
I say one more.
If you do, I'll have to open it up to the rest of them, just to keep it fair. But, I mean.
All I will say is.
I need you to step up so we can get on the court. Um, I'd like to see it put into the planning of this, this planning board, this, you know, the council, that young people who have grown up here can somehow afford to continue to live here, because I'm, I see so many kids come through, you know, that, that go to school here and, and they can't afford to live here, including my own kids. And they both, my kids have gone here and gone to college and have both done very well, but they can't, you know, it's, it's hard for kids to afford to live here, especially local, you know, it, really any kid to live here. And I don't know what the, what would be the way to do that, but I think we need to try to do something to get some local or just kids to be able to afford to live in Mills River. And that's, that's the only thing I was going to say. I mean, I think you got great candidates, any one of them be great, but I think that would be one thing that I'd hope everybody would try to get, may, maybe make something happen that way. I don't know how we would do it, but I think that'd be great if, you know, gets me on kids to be able to live here. Thank you, Jerry. Since I get Jerry a moment to speak, does anybody else have anything that's come to mind since I spoke before? Nope. Just want to make it as fair and even as I can, okay?
Good luck to you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a tough decision, it really is. I mean, yeah, it's tough. And I hope nobody holds anything against us once we do make a decision, because we got to put somebody in that seat.
Please, you need.
And I will tell you, you know, in just a few months, you'll be able to file and run. There'll be, I ran the other bus, but there'll be two at large at the time and may the best two win, okay?
If, 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 if the mayor doesn't mind, I'd like to say one thing.
Absolutely.
Um, with all of this wonderful interest for this seat, I hope to see all of you applying for, um, advisory board positions. Now, or there are no openings now, but in the future, we hold the applications for up to two years and we're always begging for, um, people to, to serve.
And it is a good stepping stone to get into it. You know, you get a good feel for what it's all about. If you hadn't had any, uh, prior board experience, you'll get you a belly full of it to hurry that way. Okay? Okay, we're going to move on. Uh, Daniel's got us something on part-time position discussion, Adam?
Yes, sir, thank you. So we, uh, recently were made aware of the fact that one of our part-time employees in the park, um, is not going to be coming back this year. And, and just for the benefit of the public, we have three part-time employees that serve the park, um, in, in off-hours. We have one that works, uh, about a thousand hours a year, basically Friday, Saturday, Sunday throughout the entire year and then Friday evening, Saturday and Sunday. Then we have, uh, Basically Friday, Saturday, Sunday throughout the entire year and then Friday evening, Saturday and Sunday. Then we have uh two other positions. Work about five hundred hours a year and and they typically come in in the late afternoons and work until sunset and then uh alternate days. And so considering the economy right now, everyone's aware that that jobs are in high demand um and. Our wage right now, starting after part-time employees is fourteen dollars an hour. And that's just simply isn't competitive at this point uh in in. Uh, the place we are in the world. And so we have posted the position. Uh, to replace the gentleman that will not be coming back and we want to try to be as competitive as we can. Part-time employees do not receive any benefits. The fiscal impact of this will be minimal in the budget. It can be absorbed with uh existing revenues that are over budget. Specifically sales tax revenue. So I'm recommending that we increase the wage for all part-time employees in the parks department from fourteen dollars an hour to seventeen dollars an hour.
And how many typically how many hours does the part-time get?
We have one position that works about a thousand hours a year. The other two positions get positions get about five hundred hours a year. Now that differed a little bit during COVID because we had some extra cleaning, but a normal year, it's five hundred, five hundred, a thousand. Okay?
Have you advertised for the part-time position yet?
We have.
And you received. One application.
But on that application or it was shown as fourteen dollars, are correct?
That's right.
Will that be across the board for all the part-time employees?
Yes, ma'am.
Did the. Part-time park employees get the yearly bonus last year?
Yes, I did.
Are you pretty confident we can fill these positions at seventeen dollars?
No.
I'm not either. I guess it'll take you a little while whether you'll know whether you get applications or not, right? And we can readdress this at that time. I don't see anybody up and up and.
What is, I'm sure we have a critical basis of when we need to make sure we got this position filled up, correct?
That's right. Yeah, they they come back in the spring after the time change. Couple of weeks away, I think. So we would make, we would request the the wage increase um immediately, go effective immediately to our distant employees as well as. Hopefully this person that was trying to fill this vacancy.
Fill the position at seventeen dollars now. We'll see.
Yeah.
Taking the other two that are coming back to seventeen.
That's right.
I want to give him a motion to go ahead and move forward with his seventeen notice base of seventeen and to give the others. Move them up seventeen dollars an hour. And we'll look just to see what we get in the next couple of weeks.
That's right.
We may have to address it again, but we need to do something. If anybody uh out in the public knows of anybody that's looking for a part-time job, please send them our way. We got a lot of people here that somebody might know something.
I'll make a motion that we direct Daniel to make the part-time wage adjustments as stated.
I'll second that motion.
Daniel, we have a problem if we had uh two or three people, since it's a part-time position. But could we have a main part-time and some alternates? Or when are do we are are we to a point we in that situation possibly yet?
That's that's essentially how we run it right now, that we have um we have three part-time individuals. Again, the one that. Works Friday evenings and on the weekends and the other two alternate days. If one of them is unavailable, our full-time uh employees have come in later and worked a longer shift. So there is some, there is additional coverage there.
Okay.
And we and we did actually extend an offer which was accepted for the full-time maintenance position recently. And so we'll have that extra person on board.
Okay, I'm good to go. So we got a first and a second. All in favor? Okay, right. And everybody gets caught up. We're staff updates.
Uh, real quick, Mr. Mayor, it's not a separate item, but I have the other um part-time discussion for a new position for finance support.
Yes.
Specialist. Um, we don't have a position in the in the in the pay classification, so we need to create a part-time one. For finance duties. Um, and this is specifically for um. Administration and development of all the various policies, procedures and oversight of the American Rescue Plan funds, which. Uh, again, for the benefit of the public is two million three hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. We have received half of that. We will receive the second half this calendar year at some point, hopefully this summer. Um, the reason we've not been able to spend any of this money at this point is the federal government has placed, uh as you might expect, quite a bit of red tape. Around it and we need to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. And I say red tape with a little bit of sarcasm because the rules are changing as of last week. We found out we're getting a new rule, so. Uh, we need somebody dedicated uh to help us get through this, uh get this money established so we can actually use it to benefit the community. So I'm recommending we we create a part-time position, provide financial support, which can be paid through the ARPA funding, so no no. Impact of the tax uh revenue or tax base rather. At thirty-five dollars an hour.
And this will be a full-time or a part-time position?
Part-time position up to a thousand hours a year. There will be a lot on the front end, a lot of hours required. And then. Once we have everything established, it will it will step back a little bit. As it as we've been on, it's really just management and reporting.
Would this person be uh expected to work from here, from home?
Mostly from the office.
Okay.
We do have the option for people to work remotely as necessary. Um, but which we did a lot during the lockdowns of the pandemic. Uh, but typically this person will be in the office every day.
And you've got a idea where you would.
Yes, sir. We have an office space available.
Okay.
What would they in this in this job would affect for this person?
For the first couple of months, it's gonna be developing all the policies I've listed in this uh staff report. Uh, which are the financial financial management and and internal controls. I know you guys have it in front of you, but for the benefit of the public, we have to develop a policy around what are projects are eligible. A policy regarding cost principles and allowable costs, conflict of interest, non-discrimination. Human resource policy, records retention policy and a subaward policy. And within each of those, there are other. Not subpolicies, but additional steps that have to be taken. Uh, and all these will come back to this board for approval. Um, so for the first several weeks, um, that person will focus almost entirely on developing these. And then once those are adopted and we figure out how that money is going to be spent with uh with, of course, support from the public. That person will help us. Develop the reporting. Practices for that, which have not been provided by the federal government as of yet, as well as the management of those funds. Uh, we will be required to do a separate audit for this, so that person will help prepare for that. Audit here when that time comes. So there's a variety of things that that they're gonna have to do. We're we're just not staffed to be able to do at this point on our own.
And I could perceive this being a person that could take some time away from our town attorney. If they understood all the bylaws.
That's right. A lot of this stuff, once we get into it, um, should not be overly complicated because. We should be getting some some examples from the federal government. We will, we will navigate that as we as we get through it.
Anybody got anything else before we? Make a motion to.
So. How how long do we have to spend the money?
The money has to be obligated by December thirty first of twenty twenty-four. The money has to be actually spent by December twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-six. So if we had a a construction project, for example, and we signed the contract in in October of twenty twenty-four, that could go beyond that that December deadline. As long as it's completed by December of twenty twenty-six.
So it's your feeling that we need, we need all this uh. Policy in place before we even go that we being counsel goes about. Determining how we're gonna spend this money.
We can't spend any of the money on anything until we have all of these policies in place. And these don't, these don't impact what money is spent on. It's simply requirements that we have all this up on the books before money can be spent.
Randy, I guess you're just honestly worried about.
I'm hesitant about spending spending the money. Whenever we not even really talked about what we're gonna spend money.
Well, I don't know that we, until we get this person in place, we won't know exactly what we even can and can't spend. What, how much can go here and how much can go there is.
That's been pretty much decided there, Daniel, because they gave each municipality and everybody got it. They gave them. How many dollars?
A ten million dollar, what I call standard deduction.
So our, uh, they're two point three million dollars. We can pretty much spend one on whatever we want.
Yes, but again, it can't be spent until all of this work is done. This person will, I mean, I'll be frank, they will be busy. And the reason that we are where we are at this point requesting this position is because. We don't have the staff to be able to complete it. Um, and and we're not unique in that regard. A lot of people are hiring people to help with this this money.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything, but. How long will it take to to get all this policy in place?
I I don't, I don't have a good answer. I would say at least until the end of the fiscal year.
Once the framework of the policy is in place, uh, at that point, would there be a need for for outside person or a part-time person?
It depends on how the money is spent. If we're, if we, if the money is allocated for, say, two projects, that's a lot less oversight, management and reporting. Than if we were to to provide it to ten different organizations and ten different projects. These one has to be tracked separately. And reported separately.
Discussing amongst us. Thought about this much at all?
The fiscal year, is that in June, July?
June, June thirtieth is the end of fiscal year.
You said it can be paid for out of the ARPA funds.
That's right.
Uh, was that, is the thirty-five K a year, like their cap that you can use? ARPA funds for this person?
No, no, no. That 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 cap is a thousand hours is is what uh if you go above that, you have to start paying benefits and things like that, which we're not going to do. Um, so the thirty-five dollars an hour times a thousand hours um is a calculation that I came up with based on part-time position. But there's.
It's so that's ARPA is didn't give you guidance on those monies. They just said you could fund it.
Yes, yes. A lot of, a lot of jurisdictions are hiring uh outside help, paying for it with ARPA funding, the administrative ARPA funds.
Do you foresee one person part-time in it, two different municipalities on on the ARPA funds?
Say it again.
Could could this person we hire for to handle our ARPA funds possibly be the same one at Laurel Park or Flat Rock or somebody?
I suppose. Yeah, probably.
So will these guidelines look the same at each beach place?
To a certain extent, yes.
This, I could see specifics expenditures creating different tracks. That they'll have to be followed throughout. You know, if it goes to nonprofits and stuff, we got, they gotta make sure that they spend it on what they said is gonna spend it on.
But a lot of this stuff will be. Will be pretty standard, no matter what the municipality is deciding to do, right?
Yes, most, most of it will be very, will be very similar.
So would the league and municipalities uh be able to come up with a general guideline?
That's what we're hoping for.
Whereas each each municipality wouldn't have to hire it on outside here.
But we're hoping that we will get uh models of all of these or excuse the policies when they become available. At this point, we don't have them for everything. Um, twenty twenty-four sounds like a long way away. It's not. It's this fiscal year and then next, and then we have to have the money obligated. This work will be. Delayed significantly if we do not not hire this position. And 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 that's okay. That's what council is okay with. We have to have everything done again by the twenty, by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, where the money gets goes back to the federal government.
Will it be in notification that if we do hire somebody on the, at the end of the term, you know, that it is a part-time? Job with a end date, it's not gonna be carried over or turned into something else?
Right. There's no intention of of turning this into anything other than just what it is for this this work, which would be administering all this ARPA funds.
Would staff direct this person once they get all the legalities upfront done to this standby?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Yeah, like I said, it's up to a thousand hours a year. It doesn't mean it's going to be a thousand hours a year.
So I mean, I'm okay with getting this person, find this person, get him in place. Spend that money to get all our paperwork right. So have them here when we decide, when we're making decisions on what we're possibly gonna do it with. With it and what hurdles we would have to jump through if we use it for that. It sounds like. Free government money, but there's gonna be checks and balances with all of it, no matter what we're spending on. Make sure eyes are divided, teeth are crossed.
And you'll be directing them. You'll be over there.
The only thing is, I don't want to spend the money to hire our own guy. If the league is gonna come up with a general guidelines, it's gonna cover. A lot of what he's gonna come up with us.
So you want to lay the heart? I mean, I mean, do you think?
I mean, all I'm saying is Ruth Williams was here a little while ago and she could run Merlak for. Best I remember her. She could run it for almost two years on the thirty-five thousand dollars. She could buy the food for that program. So. I don't know. I'm just a little hesitant.
There's, there's. There's an option to hire this person now and and get started on this. There's an option to not hire this person now and delay the implementation of this. You know, we we a staff will move forward with whatever council chooses to do. I just want you to understand that while twenty twenty-four sounds far away, it is not. And monitoring and oversight of this money is going to be important. And like I said, we don't know what that looks like yet. There's no one around who's ever had this kind of money before under this this law. There are communities with teams of people working on this.
Do we have to adopt all these policies before we get the second?
No. No, the money will come uh whether or not these are these are adopted. Uh, it just, if they're not adopted, we just can't utilize the money. That's what that means.
So last year, the council. Wanted to set set sounds money for the fire department. Has that been a thing?
We can't use it right yet. And that was also prior to the final rule being issued, um, which was kind of great because we had a. Interim final rule, so we knew some of what was allowed. And then the final rule came out in January and. As of last Friday, Sue and I went to training and learned that there will be some more guidance coming out at some point. As of last Friday, Sue and I went to training and learned that there will be some more guidance coming out at some point.
Well, I'm sure. I mean, there's some municipalities throughout the country start to make the spending money. And they don't like how it's being done. They're going to change it as we go. It'll be a never-ending chase.
So Randy, for lack of better terms, you're saying you just, maybe. You don't want us to be first to.
Well, I would rather wait myself and see how fast and how, and what. Somebody like the league municipalities is going to do. For all the members before we jump in.
But we know like an approximate day. Is it just a total guess when? Somebody would come up with, yeah, like the league would come up with.
I don't have any idea. The, the school of government's actually taken the lead on a lot of this stuff and. Uh, we know that it will be coming. Within the weeks ahead. That's about as much as we know at this point. There are examples out there. Some jurisdictions have done this stuff already. Um, but we've not. They've not been. Tested, I guess, if you will.
So we all wanted this. Better terms, I guess, maybe exactly on the table this until we get our fifth person on board, get some more input from them. They may have some background in something of this. We don't know. But, uh, we do need to move, I feel, sooner than later, just because the prior council. Set aside that money for the fire department in these. Initial, uh. Things we've got to adopt is holding it up. So, I mean. And I don't know that paying, you know, the thirty five dollars an hour to get these initial stuff that we know has got to happen either way, what they've got. And then as long as staff can have them stand by after we get the fire departments headed their way. And we'll figure out what we're going to do with something else, something else, and bring them on board each time.
Well, plus you don't know how long it's going to take to find somebody to get them hurt.
That was my biggest concern is, you know, there's going to be a need for these people, and they're going to be a specialist almost.
That's right.
And if other municipalities grab them up, you know. What's the chance that we'll have one that we can reach out to? For our needs.
What if they're all gone?
Well, that's why I was asking if they could work two places, part-time, maybe. But, yeah. Anything's possible. I mean, there's people coming out of college and stuff. All the time. I'm sure this will be a. Recomенд to them now to look into this as they come through. But we don't have that much time. Uh, we've got a year and a half.
Again, Daniel, you don't have any idea about how long it'll take, uh, somebody to get these. Guidelines pinned to paper.
No, I don't. I mean, I, like I said, I think it could be done by the end of the fiscal year, uh, which is three months. But at this point, I think that's all I can really offer.
So that would be full-time work until, for three months and?
Potentially. Yeah, and it goes beyond just the actually writing the policies. Um, you know, we still have to come to you all to do, do the presentation. You know, this person would assist with that as well. And again, I'll, I'll just point out that we're not unique in this situation. You know, no, no one in the country has had. Money like this, uh, you know, ever. Uh, no one knows how to navigate this stuff very well, and the school of government, which is probably the. The, uh, top source of government assistance in the entire state as far as providing support to staff and local officials. They have teams of attorneys working on this information. Sue and I have been to probably thirty trainings, the two of us. Um. And, and that's on top of our other full-time, uh, responsibilities, which. As we've discussed this evening, on more than one occasion, this is a very busy and growing community. So there's, there's, there's a lot of work to be done. And I think bringing on someone part-time. Is a, is a, is a small price to pay to make sure this money is accounted for correctly and utilized to. The greatest benefit of the community that we can.
My saying, I'm okay with, you know, table it away, uh, till this next Thursday. But we, I just know what we need to act soon and later on, let's get, get the initial stuff in place. I don't want to hold up the prior council's wishes to see with that many. While they will, will move us out to. Unless we assign this one for the next council meeting.
We can come back on the chat then.
Yes.
Once you get.
And get caught up, we'll hear from the finance director of town.
I don't have a lot. I just, um, on your agenda, on the backer dates. And I left off that reminding you that your vision session is Monday, March fourteenth. At eleven.
Well, eleven AM, are we doing what's here? We will work right up to the last.
We, we will feed you.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a lunch and dinner event?
That would be your decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll control that one bit. Okay, town manager.
Couple of things on the, on the visioning on the tenth. We've, uh, thus far, we have. The farmer's market discussion, food trucks, uh, we're going to have conserving Carolina attend to talk about land preservation. Uh, and then I've got some budget discussions that we're going to take care of. So if there's anything else that you, that's just. Burning that you really want to discuss, just let me know as soon as you can, so we can get it programmed in. Um, and then, uh, Councilwoman Good and I have discussed since the last meeting. You'll recall, we had a, a resident here who was upset with the open space being behind their back door. And alternative use, Andrew, if you'd like to introduce this, but basically we talked about modifying the ordinance to, to require the open space to be not on the edge of the property.
Right. Um, at the last meeting, we had the lady got up and spoke about. The commons areas for a subdivision came up next to her property. And she was running into difficult situations with. People urinating on bushes and hollering and screaming going on twenty-four seven. And when she said something, she was told that if she didn't like it, she could move. And I found that pretty cold hearted and upsetting. And I thought about it and I thought, well. If they put the commons grounds in the center of the subdivision. Then they could police their own commons grounds. They know what's going on there and. I don't think they would have the need to tell residents if they don't like it, they can move. So I was wanting to talk to the board and see if we might could send it to the planning board. That for future references. On commons grounds be kind of centrally located. And that way. You know, if they were to ever. Come upon a resident who. Maybe wasn't as self-controlled as they could be, you know, get into a rough situation. So to avoid that, I thought it would be. Good for everybody all around.
So you would want the planning board to look at this as. From major subdivision all the way through special use permits and so on, or?
Yes, for anything that's going to be built with residents living around it and have a commons grounds. For children or adults to be playing and. Gathering in groups.
Help me out here. So what? I know the council would say any special use permits. Major subdivisions, they run them through you, or do they go through planning board also?
There's a staff review and then it goes to the planning board for a final review.
Okay, never comes to us on, on that. Okay. Um, so.
If you wanted to implement this for major subdivisions to start, um, I mean. The council could just direct me to, to begin the process of drafting a text amendment. Um, that's within your authority. Or if, if you want the planning board to discuss it, we are meeting on Monday of next week, and I've kind of held off, you know, with this in mind. Um, I could put it on the agenda as a discussion item. And they could be the ones to initiate the text amendment, but either way, to make it a requirement that's enforceable, it needs to be in the code. So someone would need to initiate the text amendment process.
Yeah. I'm okay with sending it to the planning board. You know, I have some issues with it. You know, if you took this piece of property here, for instance, you got some property in the hundred-year float plane that's on the edge. You know, it'd be a prime location for. Uh, green space, play area, river access, so on and so forth. Um. And that's living in the mountains, sometimes the center, you know, always necessarily the flattest place on. On this, uh. It's going to have some issues. I mean, we'd have to have some kind of tolerances built in as you discuss it with the planning board, I think. But I'm okay with sending it to the planning board for, and see what kind of recommendation they come back with, and I'm also willing to hear another discussion from the rest of council on this side.
Is there anything in the code now that addresses common, common areas for, for residents?
Nothing in relation to the location. There are some, uh, lines in the code about. Assuring that the open space remains there perpetuity and is maintained by the HOA, but nothing about location.
I have been told that when the River Oaks. Set that development up and built it, that Henderson County did. Say that they need to put their commons area in the middle. I know, but how long has it been there?
Okay, so, um. So. Would you need that in a motion to send that to the? The recommendation would be better if it is.
Never hurts to have a motion.
So Sandy, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send a request to the planning board about centrally locating commons areas. In. Subdivisions.
I need a second.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Absolutely. Uh, how, how common is this? And your. What you've seen, like other municipalities, uh, putting regulations on.
It's common. It's not unheard of. Both location requirements, screening requirements, and that's other things we can look at too, is if a. Active common space, um, with playgrounds. Is near a property line or adjacent to areas outside the community, you know, maybe we could also look at additional screening measures. You know, maybe a fence would be required. So there, there's other ways to address it, but. Yeah, in other towns with more robust subdivision requirements, that kind of thing is, is regularly seen.
I'm just a little bit hesitant about using the word centrally, okay? We go with something like. Next number sheet.
I can bring a couple of different options to the planning board to look at, um, you know, fee. Um, or maybe just not at the boundary of the subdivision itself. It doesn't, maybe it doesn't have to be in the middle, but not at the boundary.
I know with prior special use permits without his own council before, we seen. Them bring it to us, setting the green space aside. A lot of it was due to topography. Uh, liked ponds such as that. Some of that stuff they couldn't control. It, that was the best place for the green space. Um, I'm curious to see what they come back with. But keep in mind. And I hope planning boards watch. Keep in mind, we've heard several people talk about affordable house. And all this. You keep adding and adding and adding. You know, if you put this thing in the center, yes, we're the most valuable piece of property is in that subdivision. It's in the center. More likely. If you had, uh, fences, bushes, shrubbery, anything like that, sad. They got distributed out amongst the houses or the lots in there. So just keep that in mind.
It doesn't necessarily have to be centrally located, but it needs to be contained within, not on the borders of. And if you've got lakes and ponds and rivers, you're going to have somebody down there watching the children anyway. You're not willing to just run down there by themselves.
One more question. Are we talking about green space? Are we talking about organized common grounds like with picnic tables and basketball courts? What are we talking about?
We're talking not about green space. We're talking about playgrounds. Um, basketball courts, tennis courts. Um.
The way we categorize that is, is basically active open space versus passive open space. So passive being trails, nature. Active being programmed with structures.
So we go, we got first, we got a motion. They didn't make a motion. We need a second.
They're just going to discuss it and we can still discuss it in a second.
Okay, council comments. Wait there, I need a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Senator, all in favor.